County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Smasco?
Present.
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Trello?
Present.
Commissioner Felix?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandibosh?
Here.
Could the Board please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Michigan and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of office of County Commissioner in and for the County of St. Clair and the State of Michigan according to the best your ability?
Yes, true.
Can I have a motion for appointment of a temporary chairperson?
Make a motion to have Steve Smasco as temporary chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This time I would call for nominations to the election of permanent chair.
I will nominate Steve Smasco for permanent chair.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Permanent Chair of St. Clair County Board of Commissioners? Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. This time, moving to item seven, I would ask for nominations for the election of the vice chairperson for the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dave Rushing for vice chair.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a nomination for one candidate, David R. Rushing, and the other candidates proposed as nominations for that position. Ask one more time, any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, additions, deletions to the agenda, those are actually items I had submitted essentially for discussion items relative to conflict of interest, code of ethics, statement of decorum, board duties, information, policy on economic development, policy, and adding a fifth committee for economic development, and community and economic development as a fifth standing committee. I would ask that we add those as item H under the new business of our agenda.
Make a motion to accept those as addition to the agenda. As H, item fourteen, H.
You have a second? Or was that your second, Dave? Because I actually made the motion. Is that...
No, okay, I'm sorry. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Any clarification or discussion on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, decided H on our approved agenda. Now moving to approve the agenda as amended, we have a motion, please.
So moved.
Support.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have minutes of the previous meeting as item number ten, we have a motion relative to acceptance of those minutes, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Matter is now adopted. The item eleven, consent agenda. Any discussion on the item for accepting the consent agenda? We have a motion to accept?
I have many questions on it.
Go ahead, Dave.
Possibly Carrie, you can answer this for me. The industrial facilities tax comes in for Port Huron Industrial Ventures, that's the old Prestolite building.
That I am not sure. It is, does give the address at the 3,524th Street.
Okay, I did call the city clerk's office today, she was not available, won't be available till Monday, there were letter that was given to us, was addressed December 11th, and if this is going to affect taxes, that's going to be collected. I wanted to get some specifics before we just arbitrarily have a consent agenda. They're going to have a public hearing on the 13th of January, and I did get the tax base, it's roughly $2,800 for summer taxes and $2,000 for winter taxes currently, but I have no documentation of the official what's going to be presented. Apparently this will be a six-year freeze, they'll still be paying their base taxes, but a six-year freeze, but I don't have any verification, so I'm going to say, do we have any, before I go and give some of the attacks, abatement, before I would want to support it, I'd want to know the specifics.
The, I did reach out to Gary Fletcher on that, Dave, you called me and I asked Gary Fletcher about that, and I got a response from Al Francis, basically, and I don't know if he told you this, Carrie, but I was advised that under the Industrial Tax Exemption Facilities Act, that that is basically a notice of hearing to us, this is what they wrote. The county is entitled to notice of the hearing for that industrial tax exemption request, which is conducted by the city, because the county is the taxing unit where the property is located, citing seven, MCL 207-555. County has a right to appear and comment at the public hearing regarding the request, however, the city makes the determination. This is for a receive and file only, the only real action for the county would be if we wanted to send someone to that public hearing to take a position on that tax request, so that's what Gary says, basically just receive and file because it's a notice, they're not asking us to do a resolution to accept it or do anything else, just notifying us that there's a hearing coming up.
And I trust Gary Fletcher, I did talk to Dave, who's, they got me over to him in the planning commission, and I got a different interpretation, they want a six-year and that will affect county taxes for six years.
Well, I'm just telling you what Corporation Council said, that was an agenda, that was an item for receive and file, that we're not asking us to do anything other than just receive their notice and file, that they're not asking for a resolution of support, adoption, anything else, just receive and file, so is that what that's on for, Carrie, just receive and file essentially?
That's correct, since it's your organizational meeting, you don't have the information only category, which is where it would normally go, but this is just notifying commissioners of the date and time of the public hearing, if you would like to attend and speak about the proposed tax abatement.
I guess, Dave, what we can do, any commissioner at any time under Roberts' rules and under our bylaws, can ask that a consent item be removed for the full agenda, you want to remove it and take a vote on it, or accept it as a consent item at this point?
I would like to have, if it's actually going to affect, because the way it's presented and talking to Dave, that if it's going to affect the taxes, I think we should be made notice of potentially any, and it's going to be minimal, it might only be $1,000 a year, it's pretty minimal, but it's still taxes, and if they're going to get a, if you read the entire thing, they want the tax exemption certificate. Initially, I thought that was going to be all the taxes would be exempt, but talking to Dave, but again, I have nothing official on it from the planning commission, from the city of Port Huron.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to treat that as a request to remove it from the consent agenda item and add it as item I, and then we'll vote on it as an information only item, I think that's the best way to do it, and then to see where we're at on it at that point.
Happy with that.
That be okay? I guess we will accept the agenda, motion to accept the agenda as amended by reason of this consent item. We have a motion on that?
Will you make a motion to...
Well, I'm going to ask that basically it be removed to the full agenda from the consent agenda, otherwise we just adopt it by consent, we don't vote, we're going to vote on it, and we've talked about it, we'll treat it as item I.
Want to make that fourteen, I?
Yeah.
All right, you making the motion, I'll second it.
That's fine, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, onto the accepting the agenda again now as amended the second time, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're rolling right along, all right. Now, there's citizens wishing to address the Board, and I'm going to do these in the order, I was handed to them, I'm sure our clerk organized these in a very good fashion. Mike, Hell, Ben Zink. Is that close, Mike? All right, what is it? I want to hear it, what is it?
That's all right.
No, I'd like to know your name, what is your name?
You're not the first, you won't be the last. Hillfrank.
Hillfrank, I'm sorry, Hillfrank.
First of all, congrats to the new commissioners, Commissioner Ange, Angie, and Commissioner Felix. Just, I just got to say, I got here early, usually I'm like the last one in here, and I'm hurrying up, filling my car, and people leave, but I got here early just because I wanted to kind of observe and feel the, just what the room felt like, and I got to tell you, it's just the overall feeling is so much better than the last meeting that I came to, like, there's more smiles up here, people over here are sounding happy, you don't hear people like, sound like about to cry, but they did at the podium numerous times in the last meetings. I mean, walking in here was like, almost like a funeral, it was, it was bad, and now it's just, you know, it feels celebratory, you know, there's, there's hope and change coming, and I know that's going to happen, I've got a ton of confidence in you guys for that. Getting on to, you guys are discussing the EDA today, and so I just want to give a short story of my first experience with the EDA, Dan Casey, and that was the hotel in Marine City, and you know, a lot of times people came as podium and spoke about the backroom deals, and oftentimes the EDA, Dan Casey uses NDAs and things like that, so there was a deal in Marine City for the hotel, and they needed a grant writer to make it happen, and the grant writer was working for our Tifa board to find grants for our old city hall. They were paying $5,000 a month to this grant writer for two and a half years, it was probably 18 months before I figured it out by looking into the agenda, and after that point, it continued for another nine months, the Tifa board had no idea that this company was not even working to look for grants to city hall, they were actually working for the Burtons and their hotel project, a private project, for two and a half years at $5,000 a month, we paid for the grant writer for that hotel, and who was that consulting service working with? Dan Casey, of course. It's, Dan Casey and Jeff Bohm were the two-headed snake in this county that, you know, they call it the EDA, Economic Development Alliance, I call it the Economic Devastation Alliance, because every deal that Dan Casey makes, maybe Magnus the exception, I'm not quite sure yet, considering they can fully staff their plant, but we'll see what happens there, but we got two failed hotels on this list, how many more bad deals, how much more of taxpayer dollars are going to be left to Dan Casey to waste for, you guys do something about it? You guys are giving $400,000 a year, $400,000 a year to the EDA, I don't think that's good money to be spending right now at all, and I think Dan Casey's going to go.
Carol Miller, on the EDA landfill.
Good evening and congratulations to the new board members. This board's new spirit is a welcoming breath of fresh air. It will bring us a new day of transparency, it will bring us back to the county of we people. With that, I'd like you to know that I, like Mike, I reviewed the agenda and the proposal of honesty and economic development policy, non-disclosure agreement prohibition, it brought me to great happiness. Many of you know I have spoken out against the EDA, specifically to the previous chair of the Board. I, along with the rest of the taxpayers of the county, are denied the ability to attend any of the EDA meetings. I had asked to speak with Mr. Casey and have always been denied. I look forward to speaking with him in his so-called community conversations that he was going to hold. None were noted to happen after the word was out that these conversations were being held. I telephoned the EDA only to be told that nobody from the public is allowed at meetings, nor can anyone foia anything at the EDA. I emailed, as requested, the previous board chair, who forwarded my email to Mr. Casey and he hopped me in the email to ask why we could not attend the meetings. Mr. Casey, to this day, has never replied or called me. Please stop the secrecy of the EDA. I foiaed my township of all NDAs of the previous sitting township board. Surprisingly, only one came up, and it was the EDA having our supervisor from disclosing anything that the EDA did to any of our citizens. Please make changes so we can see and question where our tax dollars go and how they are spending. The secrecy of Mr. Casey and his team needs to stop today. As far as the landfill, I'm overjoyed that Commissioner Felix has taken the bull by the horse, so to speak, on the issues plagued by this and other environmental concerns. I have no doubt that this board will stand by Commissioner Felix and his educated recommendations to bring the county back to where it needs to be and to stop wasteful spending, as well as the destruction of our much-needed farmland from solar companies who are looking for a money grab and who could care less about the destruction of property, and most importantly, the health concerns and environmental impact that they will cause to our area. Between the landfill issues and the solar issues, I have no doubt that Commissioner Felix will take what has happened and move us forward in a more impactful and financial sound way. Again, we welcome this new board and the changes for the good that you will bring to the citizens of this county. We know you have many issues plaguing you, but you pull trust in me that you will keep the county citizens in the forefront with what is right and what is just. Again, congratulations on the board and welcome to the new year.
Thank you. Sandra Tanehill from Wales, relative to EDA.
Hello, I'm Sandra Tanehill, I'm from Wales Township, I'm one of the planning commissioners. I wanted to talk about EDA as well. Their December agenda and state's EDA participated in the Detroit Regional Partnership readout session regarding a Wales Township site being considered for the VIP Verified Industrial Crop Program. I want to make it clear, Wales Township Board, Planning Commission, and ZDA was never invited, informed, or asked for consent to represent or apply for Wales Township to be a participant with the VIP program. Our local government has never invested funds or supported EDA, we are not a member. EDA has given $52.2 million grant to Detroit Regional Partnership, and EDA has decided to represent and consider our township without our knowledge or consent to fast-track an industrial zone. Now put yourself in my shoes for a minute and ask yourself, what would you do if EDA was going behind your local government's back and selling out your community? They're giving permission to access each property and evaluate its readiness for future development by automatically giving up to $100,000 in projects for prospective buyers reuse these funds to conduct additional site studies, create a site plan, or even invest in project management as they get ready for the development. This is in Wales Township. Wales Township has been clear that we do not want our rural and agricultural community industrialized, we would never agree to such terms as promoting and fast-tracking to industrializing our community. How does a non-government, nonprofit organization legally and financially represent the municipalities of this county without permission and support from the local government? How does the same non-government organization participate in discussion behind locked doors from public and sell out communities without the members of the county board knowing? Jeff Bohm is on the executive board of the EDA and has full access to this information while sitting on the county board. I can mention other names, but the dots are easily to connect. Meanwhile, Wales has zero access to answers to the discussions happening behind the closed doors and our concern for the welfare of our community. I want answers that you have access to. And ask for you to stop supporting this organization with membership and funding. When you need to put into writing to stop conflicts of interest NDAs and remind an organization of code of ethics, I wouldn't consider that trustworthy and alliance. The past, present, conflicts, and withholding critical information with EDA are a true reflection of that organization. It's time for change. Thank you for your time.
Angela DeFrain, EDA.
Angela, when you get to the microphone, can you pull it down a little bit? The people listening online can't hear the comments. Thank you.
All right, my name is Angela DeFrain, I'm a Fort Grashad resident, I'm here today to speak about the EDA. You know, really, the first run-in, I guess, I dealt with, with the EDA is the Fort Grashad Solar Fields, you know, I believe that the public should have the ability to go to these meetings, to read the meeting minutes online, I'm not sure why we are left with marketing material from the EDA, that's all we get. So if you go to their website, you can see that they've been working on a large-scale industrial project. Well, I guess that's the solar field in Fort Grashad, but this hasn't been advertised to the community, I live right in that community, this has never been discussed, it wasn't in our master plan, it was not in the county master plan, but guess what, they're updating the master plans now. The EDA, the way it's structured, is you don't get to participate unless you pay, you have to pay dues to be part of it. A majority of our community cannot afford to pay to give their input, the only people that they're asking to join are elected officials, leaders of businesses, I understand, you know, getting information from that group of people, but not unless that group of people is able to go out and talk to the community. You have to talk to the vast majority of residents, you cannot just pick 100 people from around the county and say, you get to make all the decisions. If they would have asked, if they would have put a survey out in Fort Grashad to see if we wanted to have a 1,400-acre solar field there, we would have said no, the majority of the community would have said no, but the EDA takes it upon themselves to make these decisions, make all these backdoor deals, even with the state, to get this stuff to come in, so I really think there needs to be changes, I would like to see you guys stop supporting it, Fort Grashad Township supports them, and I will be speaking up against this with Fort Grashad Township, I don't see any reason for an organization where we've got to pay dues for people to be able to hear what's going on in our county. So I just ask that you guys keep that in mind, and welcome to the new county commissioners, and I too feel hopeful for the new direction of this board, so, thank you.
Thank you. Libby Prill, EDA and Energy.
Good evening and Happy New Year. We have a rogue EDA with an executive officer who has stated that he intends to continue to pursue development of 26 Mile Road. While I am not a fan of the government, I see the only way to encourage the St. Clair County EDA into a cooperative and collaborative relationship with the people of St. Clair County is to bring them under the county umbrella. They need a core change in philosophy, and that will not happen if we continue to fund them with $400,000 annually, without any oversight, transparency, and the ability to hold them accountable to the county's mission. The cost of doing this will be offset by the reduction in risk of the shady investments that ultimately result in fines and cost overruns. I want to tie this into Saudi, Saudi is the biggest funder of solar, they are raking in millions of dollars in US green bucks, and you know what else they fund? They are said to be the world's largest source of funds and promoter of Salafist jihadism, which forms the ideological basis of terrorist groups such as Al Qaeda, Taliban, Islamic State of Iraq, and Levant and others. Ranger Power is building the 4,000-acre solar array that crosses Birchville, Clyde, Fort Grashad, and Grant Townships. Greentown Labs is Ranger Powers' single institutional investor. Greentown Labs is also a business partner of Saudi, Aramco, Aramco, it's A-R-A-M-C-O. I hope that the board looks into this and takes a look at how this might possibly relate to the county resolution about networking with foreign adversaries, which certainly a terrorist group is. This is going to sound really crude, but PHW33 is tantamount to municipal rape. Residents of Michigan are being forced to submit to big energy by the state in an out-of-control governor's agenda. From 2001 to 2023, the United States lost 17% of its tree cover. The US is one of the top five countries to reforest, but we continue to deforest at a higher rate than we reforest. Michigan ranks 10th in deforestation in the US. A new center for global development meta-analysis of 117 studies has identified the key factors that drive or deter deforestation. Some findings confirm conventional wisdom, like building roads and expanding agriculture in forested areas, areas, for example, it worsens deforestation, whereas protected areas deter deforestation. St. Clair County needs balance through a careful land management plan, we should not deforest for commercial or industrial projects where existing light or existing deforestation exists. To do that, we need to have an EDA that respects that, thank you.
Linda Schwaehofer, China, EDA.
Good evening, Linda Schwaehofer, Supervisor of China Township. I am very happy to see the new board members here, it is a breath of fresh air and God does answer prayer. So, having said that, I wanted to speak, there's been a lot of information that's been given, and there probably will be more, to speak about the EDA. As a charter township of China, for many years, we did not involve ourselves with the EDA, we didn't really think that we needed that, and then along the line, after I'd been there a while, they did approach us again, and, you know, kind of lured us in saying, well, you know, we'll give you, you know, a good rate, you know, an introductory rate, and so we did it for a while, we didn't really see a whole lot happening, we always had the mindset that in China Township, if you have an infrastructure, we have things that are there that, you know, may be attractive to certain businesses, that we really didn't need the EDA to do our bidding for us, they would come to us, and then we would have the ability to decide yes or no, and that's the way we liked it. Then things started to change. We did join in, and, but most recently, and I've only been here, you know, a month or so, we have had a decision made at our last board meeting, that, and it was a six-to-one vote, that we will not be a member of the EDA going forward. We're saving ourselves money, number one, and we will go ahead and we will fend for ourselves, we'll make the decision... ourselves, we'll make the decisions for ourselves. And I think that that's a tribute to the new board. So having said that, I will entrust you, as our county commissioners, to do what's right for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Masters, Wales, EDA and County Contributions.
Thank you, and good evening, and congratulations to the new members. And thank you so much for those members that stayed with us and won through the trust of your constituents. We so much appreciate you. It was starting to feel like this county was becoming a runaway train. Like I heard Matt one night say, "It's like playing whack-a-mole. We're being attacked from all different sides." So I sincerely thank all of you. It's hard to correct Sandra Tannehill because she's got her facts down, but I do think, the only correction I have is I do think that that grants up to $216,000 that they're willing to contribute to development in Wales and make it fast-track, verified industrial properties, as she spoke. I'm the supervisor of Wales. Wales has never contributed to the EDA, which I find very striking. I called some of these entities. I emailed some of these entities as a supervisor of Wales. Never got a call back, never got an email back. That worries me. I keep watching their real estate website to see if our lands are going to be posted there, quite literally. What I would send a message to is to anyone contributing, especially our county, because essentially, as you know, those are our funds too, or any other entity that is contributing. They're going out of their way, or they went out of their way. Jeff Bohm missed the meeting of December 5th to be at the EDA. While I was here speaking, please cut funding to EDA to try to sell and promote lands of Wales. We are not a contributing member. So if you are paying into this, I would go to your board immediately and have them look into this. And then I just ask this board, please, please look at what we're contributing. You've done so much to listen to us locally, and you've gone well out of your way. I sincerely appreciate it. I can't, I can't stress that enough, how grateful we are, but please focus on, I don't know if it's approximately a half a million dollars of our public funding. Maybe we could use that for something else, an entity, maybe a committee, something that the public is invited to, the taxpayers are invited to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Samantha Catabaw, Cota Ba.
Roda Ba.
Close, but no cigar.
Hi, everybody. My name is Samantha Roda Ba. I am the owner at Power Housekeeper. It's a small cleaning business. I'm new to the area, and I just wanted to say hi to everybody and introduce myself around. I am looking forward to meeting new people and getting some new connections in the area. What I do, my mission is to work with other people in the area that are going through, like, recovery, or, you know, coming out of jail, things like that, and they're having a hard time reintegrating back into the working society. I've been through these struggles myself, and I've been, well, 1.1 million people in America, or in Michigan, are affected by addiction. So there is a lot of work to be done with that. So I'm looking forward to getting to know everybody, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I tried to organize these into the topics. We just had a late arrival here, Dan Turk on EDA is the last one, but Mr. Turk, come
Well, welcome, new members. Congratulations. For better than two years or so, a lot of us local leaders that have been elected have been coming in front of you folks because of the problems that we had with the EDA. It was a predatory behavior. We've all seen it. You hear the testimony from others. The funding really needs to get cut or bring it under the umbrella of the county. You know, moving forward, we may also want to add two people, if you're not going to put it under the umbrella, put two people on the EDA instead of getting information back from one person. We had that in the past, and this board was receiving half-tainted information. We relied on one person. Remember the whole thing almost a year ago? I need $21 million for Marine City Highway or St. Clair County. It's all done. We're all done. Guess what, folks? We're all still here. So food to think about. Congratulations, everyone. I see, you know, it looks like we're on the right step, and please keep moving forward. Thank you. God bless.
New topic, Eileen Tesh on elections.
Thank you and welcome. St. Clair County Republican Party will be having a special event with Patrick Kolbeck. January 21st, 2025, we will email all of you commissioners and strongly suggest that you come and invite all those, even former Senator Patrick Kolbeck said, "Opposing views are welcome." And what concerns, why this is so important, is because a couple things. Number one is that Senator Kolbeck, former Michigan Senator Kolbeck, he wrote the book, The 2020 Coup, and he is widely recognized as one of Michigan's top election integrity experts. He is an accomplished aerospace engineer, certified Microsoft Small Business Specialist, and former vice chair of elections and government reform in the Michigan State Senate, a frequent guest on national TV and radio programs, and he continues to work with what he calls the meddling kids. And that's quite a topic because it's young detectives that he has recruited across the nation that took count of what was going on with this election. Because why isn't anybody asking questions, especially in the battleground states like Michigan, where it went to Trump, but all of the Senate seats went to the Democrats? So we can't go on like this with these machines. So we're asking all of you to please come, and the audience as well. It's a $10 donation. And I will leave you with this. Again, January 21st, when Angie Waters came to the St. Clair County meeting, and she was asked, "Do you believe there's fraud here in St. Clair County?" And she said, "No." Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, we'd like to say, "Great." But we need proof, and the machines can't give us proof. And we've dealt with many of the clerks, and they can't give us proof either. So again, we need peace of mind. It's a new board, it's a new day, and it's a new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Last gentleman came up, it looks like Teal McGank. Is that correct?
It's Tyler.
Tyler. It looks like, okay.
Tyler.
Sorry about that. Sorry. My handwriting's worse.
So I just want to speak, I mean, there's obviously been a lot of talk about solar panels, so what I did, because there's been a lot of complaints about noise, so I wanted to make sure that I researched a lot of local documents. So I'm reading the Fort Grashit Planning Commission Site Plan Review, and I'm just going to read this. It says, "The sound pressure level of a large principal-use SES and all ancillary solar equipment shall not exceed 45 decibels at the property line of an adjoining nonparticipating lot. The site plan shall include modeled sound isolines extending from the sound source to the property lines to demonstrate compliance with the standard." This is the Fort Grashit Planning Commission Site Plan Review. And then I'm looking at the portside solar settlement proposal. And if you read this, it says that in the event it is determined that the inverter exceeds 45 decibels for a period of one hour at the property line of an adjoining nonparticipating lot, portside must bring the converter into compliance and, if necessary, construct permanent sound walls within two months after receiving necessary construction approvals. The reason I bring this up is I feel that I'm concerned about the misinformation because I know that, I've heard that, you know, it can be 60 to 70 decibels. But when I look at the portside solar settlement proposal, and when I look at the Fort Grashit Planning Commission Site Plan Review, they both state that it cannot exceed 45 decibels. This is with both these documents. So I don't know where it's coming from, where it's going to exceed 45. My understanding was that 45 decibels, I was at 50 decibels was like the sound of a moderate rainfall, and 40 decibels was the sound of like a library. So it's in between those two things. And so if my understanding is that it was between those two things, and it says in both the Planning Commission Site Plan Review and the settlement proposal that it can't exceed 45 decibels, so that would mean that if it exceeds 45 decibels, that's a breakage of the agreement, in essence. So, again, I just think this just leads me to believe that this thing that they're constructing isn't going to exceed 45 decibels, compared with they intentionally construct something that's going to break the agreement. Doesn't make sense to me. So I just find that a little suspect. And also, I'm just concerned about the rise of us versus them thinking that I see a lot of these days. And I guess I'm just concerned that sometimes we can feel passionately about something to the point that we are so negative about it. I just hope that we have a more balanced view about both the positives and negatives of something, because I feel like when something is so easily demonized, you know, we don't have to look at the balance like we, and have like a balance look like we should. I just wanted to say that, so thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Last three citizens there, I saved the most uplifting ones. We have David Hoffman for commendation of new members.
You mean, welcome to the board, all the new members. I would have to agree with some of the other ones in the room here that the atmosphere is much different now than it has been in the past, and I think most can agree with that. I am a pastor. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm also a precinct delegate for the St. Clair County GOP. And with that, what I wanted to do was commend each and every one of you for what you're doing, because what you are actually doing is fulfilling what Jesus Christ has told us to do, which is to render unto Caesar what is Caesar's, which is your civic responsibility. And so one of the things that I want you to know is that I'm going to be praying for each and every one of you. Because when I would open my church services at my church, I would always open with three things, and I would start with, first, Jesus Christ still sits on the throne. Number two, prayer changes things. And number three, Jesus Christ loves you, and so do I. So with that, I wanted you to know that I will be praying for each and every one of you. And with that, also to give you the godly wisdom to be able to make sure that you put every stumbling block in the way for the solar initiative that they want to put into Fort Grashit. Because I can tell you, for the meetings that I have gone to, the greater percentage, I would say 99.9% of the people there do not want it. So as you contemplate these bigger issues, please think about what God would have you to do. Pray about it, because the people certainly don't want it. And to be honest with you, it's very close to my house, and I don't necessarily see Jesus as wanting it either. So God's blessing on each and every one of you as you start to fulfill the task that Christ has given you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. I have Dawn Falk regarding congratulations.
I'm very excited for our new board tonight. Congratulations to you all. We all have some big expectations for this board. To me, you're starting off on the right foot by introducing honesty and economic development policy and a nondisclosure agreement policy. It's very obvious that our Board of Commissioners has listened to their constituents and our complaints about the NDAs and these projects such as a solar installation, data mining, wind turbines, et cetera, that seemingly appear out of nowhere. The citizens are always playing defense against these projects. My hope is that now the playing field will be more leveled. Thank you guys for that. Now, to the audience, I'd like to invite you guys to the next Advisory Board of Health meeting on February 15th, Wednesday, at 9:00, at the St. Clair County Health Department, 3415 28th Street, Port Huron. It is very important that we support Dr. Nevin and our, not Lansing's, our health department in implementing the medical director's recommendations for the protection of our local citizens and the environment. I'm very encouraged to see so many people attending various meetings throughout our county. Remember that when people fear the government, there is tyranny. And when the government fears the people, there is liberty. So keep filling those seats, educate yourselves on all matters local, and remember that the power comes from the bottom up, or the foundation, me, the people, not from the top down.
I saved the best for last. Mary Conlin wants to say a prayer for the county commissioners. Mary?
I have to correct that. I guess I said February 15th, January 15th, 9:00 a.m. Be there or be square.
I thought I was coming up here with one thing. I have a quick comment, but right now I want to pray for our county, our citizens, and for our Board of Commissioners. Father God, I just praise you and I thank you. We humbly come before you, and we ask for your grace and mercy on our county and our state. Lord, I ask that you give this Board of Commissioners wisdom and understanding. There's a lot of hidden landmines. I ask that you show them to them. Father God, I pray for the people in this community. There are so many brilliant people that are digging deep and coming out with truth. I ask that your blessing be upon them, you expand their wisdom and knowledge, and that you lead them and guide them, and that you would lead and guide all of us into the truth and lead us into freedom. In Jesus' name, amen. The second thing I want to talk to you about is, I think it was last week, there was five of us that went out to Chiauasi. You talk about 45 decibels. We had a meter reader out there, sitting in the center of the road. We were at 70 decibels in a lot of places. So to respond to the 45 decibels, once they're in, we're complete, we're done. We have no, absolutely no recourse. The other thing they're saying is that these things last for 25 years. The truth and reality is they're 10 to 15, and usually approximately 12 years. And then it's the farmer's responsibility to finish it off, to do whatever. So I don't know what we can do to stop it. When I was a kid, my dad had an opportunity to sell our property to the K.O.A. The community came forth and said, "No, we don't want that in our community because it's going to bring out a bunch of bad bikers." So my dad was stopped from selling this property. I would like to know where our right is as a people of our community to stop things that we believe is not healthy for us and that's going to hurt our environment. Thank you for your time, and I pray God's wisdom and understanding unto all of you.
Thank you, Mary. Having no other forms for citizens to be heard, we will move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business proposed by any of the commissioners? Seeing none, under new business, item appointment of Sergeant-at-Arms. Prior to this organizational meeting, I sent out to assist whoever would be board chair, soliciting interest from every commissioner on what areas of appointments they might want. And as to Sergeant-at-Arms, no one except David Rushing had raised their hand. So Dave, congratulations. You are, once again, Sergeant-at-Arms. I saw you kind of wanting, chomping at the bit there, but you hadn't been appointed yet, so we went without you for one meeting. yet, so we went without you for one meeting. As to appointments for standing committees, uh, not to be too presumptuous, but I had actually prepared some um my thoughts on that and delivered it to administration this morning. Um, so I don't know, Carrie, how do you handle that? Just hand them out or just whatever?
Um, yep, the committee appointments are um at the Board Chair's discretion.
Okay. Well, I'm just the um, do we need to do anything other than wait a motion to? I mean, I just, I've given them to you and Jenny Posey and Chris Morris, so that's that's done, right? Okay. Um, the Board Committee assignments for standing committee, I also submitted.
Excuse me, Chair? Can we go over so the public knows?
Sure.
Who you've appointed to these committees?
Sure. Um, let me pull it up. Do you want to, there's thirty-seven of them. You want to read?
No, 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 just the the four committees that you appointed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is the standing.
Oh, sure. No, I gotta, I gave a, let me pull that up too. I gave my. What I'd indicated is that um, under section eight of our bylaws, Rushing will be Sergeant at Arms, our bylaws establish four standing committees, a Ways and Means, Human Services, Judiciary, Public Safety, and Environmental Public Works. I proposed adding a fifth standing committee in the things that I did for a committee called Community Economic Development, which if that passes, then I'll do it one way. If not, it'll be the other way. So if we just have the four, uh, it would be uh, Ways and Means would be Carrie Angie, Human Services, Lisa Beden, Judiciary, Public Safety, David Vanabosh, Environmental Public Works, Joy Terrello. And then this Community Economic Development, if we if we adopt that as a bylaw amendment, it'll be Robert Felix. And I'll go into why I thought that was important. If the Board declines to adopt my recommendation for adding the Community Economic Development Committee, I would then instead appoint Robert Felix as Ways and Means as opposed to Carrie Angie, for whatever reason, we talked about some of that. But I, that's that's what I have done so far, so. Good enough for?
This is the first I'm I'm hearing of it. I didn't receive the email that you're talking about.
Oh, I sent it out. I sent it out. Everybody got it was.
I, so I did not receive it, so.
I did not either. Well, I'll, I can, unless there's something wrong with the county email, I sent it out in November. So, you know, has anyone else not missed any?
It is I T.
Pardon me?
It is R I T.
Well, I don't know, but in any event, I mean.
Our can.
I guess all I can tell you is I did the best I could. I mean, you want to stay on?
Yeah, and I, no, I appreciate that. I'm just letting you know that I did not receive.
Oh, okay.
The information, right? That's why you didn't get a reply from me.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I would just ask that you you double check that.
I will.
I don't, I don't know why I didn't receive it.
I'll pull it up tonight for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That part of it. Board of Commissioners bylaws, um, there's been a bylaws presented by the administration with some red line corrections or additions or deletions. Any discussion on that item?
Um, can I go back to the last one, Steve?
Sure.
Uh, are those appointments being made tonight? Do you need a motion to go to the full board? Are you just going to do it as?
Nope, nope. I just, the bylaws indicate that the Board Chair has discretion. It's the responsibility and duty to unilaterally make these appointments.
Yeah, I'll go to the next part, because in the bylaws, there's only four committees.
Right.
So we're going to have to, as commissioners, approve the fifth committee, correct?
Right. When it gets to that point, it may be a bit out of order or whatever, but the way I handled that was I I submitted my uh my appointments subject to the addition or non addition of that last committee. So I did a written document that's now part of the public record to clarify that, so. But as far as the bylaws themselves, Carrie, you want to tell us a little bit about what happened with those and what you tried to do with them and?
Um, the only changes proposed by Admin were just housekeeping cleanup. There were no substantive changes that have been proposed by Admin.
Okay. So at this point, we need a motion to approve the uh Board, the bylaws as presented, amended by administration, correct? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Does that include the uh the other information that you've given us or?
No, what I what I would propose doing, Dave, is when I get down to that, I'll I'll make a motion.
Fair enough, okay.
I'll make a motion to amend. If it flies, it flies. If it dies, it dies.
Okay.
We'll just deal it that way. Um, okay, so any further discussion on that? Do we need a, that's not a roll call, is it? It's just, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that carries their doctor as presented. Uh, past and present economic, now this item E is something that Robert Felix put on. He put three items on. So Bob, you want to talk about item E as a discussion item?
Certainly. Chairman Samasco, I have watched the activities of the economic, excuse me, Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County for over ten years. I have observed the effect that it has had, both positive and negative, to the residents of the county and their quality of life. The rate of new projects have accelerated over the last five years. Projects that have received extremely negative resident responses during that five years includes a twenty-six mile road expansion project, the Elginak Brownfield proposal with its twenty-four year tax abatement, and residents adjacent to that development reporting not being aware of this project until the day before the county hearing. The King Road Data Center, seventy-five thousand square foot facility right next to Crossroads Church. Industrial solar developers receiving the red carpet treatment from the E D A documented in the Times Herald as early as two thousand nineteen. The Boardwalk Theater in St. Clair receiving five thousand dollars of ARPA funds that had to be passed through the E D A, five hundred thousand, thank you. Very recently, elected supervisors in Wales Township, as you heard tonight, and in Greenwood Township, were unaware of major project discussions the E D A was advancing in their respective townships. There are many other items, some good and valuable contributions. The E D A, E D A and Dan Casey like to talk about the millions of dollars of investment brought into the community. This means nothing if the community doesn't want the effects of the investment and doesn't benefit from it. During a June two thousand twenty-four phone call, I asked Mr. Casey of the E D A who all this development was supposed to be for. I had to answer my own question. I said it should be first and foremost for the benefit of all the people of St. Clair County. During an October two thousand twenty-four meeting with Mr. Casey, I asked, where are all the people who support and want these projects? I would like to meet and talk with them. He said that only the naysayers seemed to come forward to discuss the projects. Well, I now know that this is not true. At the Board of Commissioners meeting here in this room on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I heard many individuals in the community come forward in favor of these projects and thank Mr. Bohm and Mr. Casey for their efforts in helping them make more money. On that night, I don't recall any ordinary ordinary citizens addressing this board in that manner on this subject. Well, tonight, we have heard from many ordinary citizens who shared their views of what the E D A has meant in their lives. One individual told me a few days ago, it's like living with a target on your back, wondering when your home and neighborhood will be slated for development past anything you would recognize. The current approach of the E D A with new projects is like kicking the door down versus being invited into someone's home for a discussion. Mike Hilfnek of Marine City asked the following question at a March two thousand twenty-three meeting held by the E D A and Jeff Bohm about the twenty-six mile road project. The video is widely available. He asked, when does the community get a say in these projects? He didn't receive an answer that night. I now know the answer. Under the current system, the residents don't. I believe that is wrong, and I think it needs to be changed. I will be proposing that the county no longer fund the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County. I am convinced that the organization is not capable of changing in a manner that would best serve all of the people of St. Clair County. I will be investigating other ways of fulfilling this function, including possibly bringing it in-house as a county function, as many other counties in the state currently do. I am requesting that the administrator controller delay sending any county funds to the E D A until after the January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, till we fully address this issue. And I'd make a motion to that effect tonight if that is necessary. The county paid the E D A three hundred and eight thousand dollars of taxpayers' money in two thousand twenty-four. The economic development function is too important to leave to a select group of unelected individuals operating in secrecy behind non-disclosure agreements and standing behind an organizational wall that does not respond to FOIA requests. I yield the floor back to the Chair.
Anyone else have any discussion or comments relative to the uh comments by Mr. Commissioner Felix? Well, what I would say, Bob, is this, um, I've got to know over the last year and a half, mostly on the landfill, and um, I too have had concerns with uh the way our economic development operates in the county. And I was elected to the Board in two thousand and seven, worked with Jeff Bohm for many years, left for a while, came back. But, you know, on a, you don't have a second on your motion, so it's it's not before, it's as a motion. But as a as a discussion item, I think it's it's worthy of looking at, but what I don't want to do is things that are abrupt, because I don't have the answer to the best way to continue with economic development that really serves the community. I don't think we can do without it in the community, but I agree that this should definitely be looked at. There's, I've done what I could do to, what I call due diligence. I've I've looked at things across the country, communities bigger than us, smaller than us, in our state, out of our state, different kinds of organizations. The economic development can be done a number of ways. It can be done as an independent entity such as our St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance, which is a corporation under the next Michigan Development Corporation, which is even a corporation, is a public agency, for what that's all about. But they are, have a board, there's forty members, there's ten on the executive board. We we give them forty percent of their um funds, so maybe we should have forty percent of the board members. We have one, and that was Jeff Bohm. I mean, and I've reached out to Dan Casey. I saw this coming when when Jeff took a pipe on this election. I knew there'd be changes coming, and I knew you'd be a part of it, because I know how you campaigned, okay? And there's, so my point of it is, it's something to look at. Um, you know, do we do, do we bring it in-house? We run it through um our county planning? Do we do we have the money as a grant with restrictions? Do we require, as my my proposal I made just for discussion tonight, this quote, policy, was something that's really bothered me for a year and a half. It just, to me, it's just totally incongruous to public service to have an N D A signed by an elected official. It just is absolutely foreign to how I think, but I'm only one person. So hopefully this board, we can, we need to, we need, this board needs to develop its sense of of unity on how we want to handle things. And it's too early for me to support, if you'd have a second, I'd vote no on it, because I don't want to take that kind of abrupt action right at this moment. But it's one of several options. Bring it in-house, um, have grants to restrictions, have contracts with them, have memorandum understanding, letters of intent, all these things that lawyers can do, that's how I think. And Carrie can help, because now we got, and Fletcher will be here, and others, you know, to kind of guide us through that. I think there's, change has to take place. I want the public to have a hand in how the funds are spent. I want them to have a hand in how we think about spending those funds and make sure that the E D A, because in talking with our E D A Director, you know, he's got a corporate purpose, and he has corporations in his membership that he has a duty to, equal to us, or, you know, essentially equal to us, but they're incongruous. They're, we have our public service aspect is one piece of it, but on the economic development front, if it's all in, it's all in, you know? And they go to non-community members, they go to Wales or non-community members, that's his job. That's what he does. He cites him, he'll cite him, you know, anywhere that he thinks is going to advance the entities' organization's goals. So so how do we do that? How do we reform the organization? How do we work with the organization? How do we create our own organization? I talked to Jim Fried a couple of times. I reached out to him, because he's the Port Huron, he's the face of that, as far as I'm concerned, for the city of Port Huron. I talked to him today, in fact, about reaching out, how do we make this work if we're going to work together, or do we just go our separate ways? So my two cents worth is, you brought that up, you campaigned on it, you're you're, you know, you're not screwing around with this, you're going to go for getting something done. I appreciate that, because I too, probably to my detriment sometimes, want to take action when maybe I should be a little cautious. So I would just say, maybe have the Board pine in on how we want to handle it. Do we want to have a special committee, which the Board Chair can say, we're having a special committee to look at it? If we form this economic uh or Community Economic Development Committee as a board, we can talk about it in that context and have more focus on it. You know, how do we do that? You know, and then you would be the person in charge of that, and you and Dan Casey can get close, you know, you can talk about it, figure out maybe how to get along or not, you know? That's my thoughts on it. So I think if your comments, I think the public, they're applauding, I mean, I know there's a there's a tremendous interest in it. It's bothered me for some time that there's just something wrong about how it's working, and I don't like it. So I'll give you that. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. And don't blow it up just to be blowing it up. Um, the previous board, of course, approved the twenty twenty-five budget, and the funding is still there for E D A. When do we make, when have we made a payment and when's the next one going to E D A?
Um, typically, the quarterly dues for this quarter would get paid in January. However, if the Board would like me to pause that, we can certainly do that.
Um, the timeframe that we could look at this and get the discussion going, I'm all for holding the monies until, get Dan Casey in the discussion, so we can work closer together and possibly in-house, but there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. But I'd be all for holding funding until we can work this out, because I don't want to send, it's twenty-five percent, correct, every quarter?
Uh, yeah, approximately seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so if we're going to, seventy-nine thousand this month, I'm not willing to spend seventy-nine thousand, because right now we have, for lack of a better adjective, an adversarial position with the E D A. And I have never supported NDAs. I can't support NDAs, and I can't support anybody that does support NDAs. We are elected by the public, and we have to be transparent. And if we can't get businesses into our county without telling us exactly what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, prior to uh an application being put to any planning commissioner, any movement forward, I think we need to be told upfront what's coming. And if that's not an option, that our current E D A can do, or anybody working with this county, to get businesses in, let the businesses go elsewhere. We survived in two thousand eight, that big downfall where we had the monies, uh, the housing bubble, and we'll survive without more businesses coming in. And we need to support the quality of life and what the residents want in this county. And I, of course, I bring up that I'm vice chair on the Planning Mission in Riley, and I'll tell you, I'll fight tooth and nail as vice chair there to have any type of solar or wind or anything like that would come in there, because I know the residents there do not want it. So uh, if you need a motion tonight, because I could ramble some more, but if you need a motion tonight to spend payment until we get this resolved.
Let me ask you one, quite one thing. You know, there's eight or ten employees over there, you know, and you start pulling people's money in their budgets, I mean, I hate to see, I mean, I don't want to do anything too abrupt. I I get what you're saying, put a moratorium on the payments. I would think that, you know, let their first payment go out, it's the first quarter, gives us ninety days to, as a new board, to come together, to come together and look at that. That's the only thing. So if you want to make the motion, you can, but I thought, my thinking is that you, I don't want to do what Ottawa County did, they come in and just start doing abrupt.
I'll reiterate what I already said, is that if we make, to hold a payment, maybe it gets paid in February, maybe it gets paid in March, that to get Dan Casey and we're representing St. Clair County in economic development, because if we can get this resolved, E D A as it currently sits, potentially, we could be a good partnership together without doing it in-house. I don't know that, but those questions need to be answered. Uh, I would, I do not want to send, spend eighty thousand, so I would definitely make that motion. If it fails, it fails, but we could easily make that payment in February or March, whenever we can get this, these questions resolved, because if we get to the point in February or March that, well, we're going to do that, we're going to pull all our funding out of E D A, or we threw eighty thousand dollars away.
Is is Dan Casey here? Is he by any chance?
He is.
Is he? Could you take the podium for a second, Dan, if you don't mind? I got a question for you, just. Just one question, Dan. What would the practical effect be if if your quarterly payment wasn't made in a timely fashion? What what practical effect would that have on your employees and the people that work for you?
Well, it's it's a cash flow issue, first of all. Secondly, the the county's funding goes directly to people.
Does it? So you're, so if we if we had a moratorium on it, that would it would be directly affect your employees?
It will.
Nothing further? Dave, do you have any questions for him or anybody else?
Uh, I got a question for you, if you can. And I'm sure this can be part of the discussion, but because you're here, I'm going to ask you, is it possible for the E D A to work in St. Clair County with this board and whatever this board decides as a majority, to not have NDAs?
So I think there's two separate issues. The first is local communities can decide to or not sign NDAs. It's totally up to you. So I'm not sure why, okay, go ahead.
What I'm, well, if you're representing the Well, if you're representing the county with the monies that we give you, and anybody, yourself included, that signs an NDA, you're also affecting the 31 communities, because you're trying to get businesses in St. Clair County, whatever township it is. I know Wales, we talked on that one, you have one over in Greenwood, the one in Chinatownship. If you're doing all this negotiating, and you brought up that you can't say, for the one out in Greenwood, you can't say who the player is until after it gets approved. Well, I know in Riley, I would recommend that we don't even accept an application, because indirectly, when you sign an NDA, we sign an NDA, because we're funding you to do economic development in St. Clair County. That's the way I'd see it. And I'm not going to support somebody who signs NDA. I've just, I can't do that as an elected official.
So that is, that is factually incorrect. When I sign an NDA, it covers the EDA staff and the EDA board. It does not cover any other organization that funds the EDA.
I'm going to disagree with you. We have a contract with you. Contract, we give you, fund you, make it easy math, 300,000. That's a contract with you. And if we give you direction that no NDAs will be signed, if you're going to be working with our communities in St. Clair County, we can do that with tying that onto our funding to you. If that's not an option that you can do, then I'm not going to support funding EDA.
I was talking about it from a legal perspective.
I am too.
So from a legal perspective, we're a private corporation, right? So when I sign an NDA, the NDA covers the EDA board and the EDA staff. It doesn't cover any community. That, I was only talking about it from a legal perspective. You're talking about it more from a policy standpoint. That's a different conversation.
I think it's legal also, and Jeff Bohm isn't here, and, you know, he did a lot of good things. But he sat on the board, so you're telling me that if you signed an NDA, he signed it also, because he was on the board? That's what you just said?
No. No. I'll repeat again. If I sign an NDA, it covers every board member.
That included Jeff Bohm?
They do not have to sign an NDA themselves individually. The NDA I would sign would cover them, but not their other duties outside of the EDA business.
Well, we'll get this work through, but pretty much when I ask questions, I already know the answers before I ask them. And I believe you're incorrect on your legal status on that.
Dan, let me ask you.
We need to make that decision as a board. And if we do have a motion tonight, I'd want to hold the funding of the 80,000. And then if it gets turned down, then you get your first payment. I do own my own business, and my biggest asset is my employees. Same thing with the county. I always think your biggest asset is your employees. You've got good employees, you're going to succeed. And I don't want to have your employees, I don't know what your financial status is. I know my company, I've got plenty of money. I can cover payroll for a long time. I wouldn't get myself in a position where I couldn't pay payroll, depending on what person's salary. If you're saying that your employees will not be employed if we don't give that 79,000 to you, is that what you're stating today?
No, that's not what I'm stating. I'm saying it will affect cash flow.
Well, that's what I thought Steve was kind of referring to when he asked his question.
That's what I was asking.
So it's not going to affect your employment at all?
It will. It affects our cash flow, and we pay our employees from available cash. So we would have to draw down on our fund balance.
Could I ask what your fund balance is? Is that private?
No, I can tell you. We have about $250,000 in fund balance.
I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else have any discussion or comments relative to item E?
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Dan Casey is excellent at what he does. He is representing the corporations and working to install those corporations and places in the community. I was a corporate warrior for years, those that know my background. I relocated plants, located plants. What I see here, and I've watched it for the last 10 years, you have a situation where there is a disconnect. Things are coming into this community that the community doesn't want. Now, I have great sympathy for employees losing their job. I've closed entire plants and watched employees lose their job. I've lost my job. I don't like to do that. However, I have an entire county and an entire district to think about, and I think that takes precedence. So at this time, I am moving that we not fund the EDA for this first quarter, until such time as we determine what we are going to do as a board. And my earlier discussion about the EDA, I'm not proposing we decide what we're going to do tonight. I'd be more than willing to move that to the full board, because that's going to take some time and some thought. But at this point, I think it's important for the residents and for this county to realize we are serious about taking economic development and community development, take it, take it for the residents' benefits. I yield to the chair.
What I will, what I, what I will discern from this is that Dave's similar motion, without a second, didn't get a second. But your motion, if it gets a second, we can call a vote on it. But at this point, there's a motion without a second.
I'll make a motion to hold funding until we get this resolved.
Actually, you want a second? Bob's motion, you want a sec?
Yeah, I can do that.
Is that what you want to do? Okay, we have a motion and a second. On Bob Felix's motion to have a moratorium on the first payment towards the EDA funding due January of this year, until such time the board can determine how to proceed. Is that my correct recitation?
That is correct.
Now, does anyone have any other comments or questions on that? If you want to speak up on any of this?
I would just like to say that I think, to your point, Steve, about slowing down, this is obviously something we need to look at and address. People have strong feelings about it. I think that we need, I think a workshop, let's brainstorm, let's see what works best for our county. It sounds like it would be maybe a hybrid of what we're currently doing. So I'm, and I'm all in favor of that. I don't think us rushing to a decision tonight withholding funds does anything other than create a bigger divide between the EDA, which we're trying to build a bridge. So I support workshopping this and coming to a solution that makes sense for our county.
Any other comments from any other commissioners?
I would support Commissioner Beeden's idea of a workshop. It certainly needs to be taken seriously. However, what withholding funds tonight will do is bring the EDA to the table in a serious manner, instead of, instead of taking it where they have the high ground.
Well, I would, I would tend to agree with that from a lawyer's perspective. I've negotiated many things, and that's certainly raising the stakes anyway. So we have a motion, we have a second. Does anyone else want to have any other comment on that? I guess my only, my last comment before we vote would be that if it would have an immediate effect on employees' discharge and so forth, layoffs, I would not support it. But it appears that they have fund balance, and I think Bob is correct, that that would certainly open the, make the discussion much more vigorous between the parties. So at this time, I would call a vote. Can we have a voice vote on that motion?
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
No.
Commissioner Trowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Bosh?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now, we also have a motion to have a workshop. Do we need a motion for that, Kerry, or just to workshop it? I don't think so.
So as part of my administrator's report, I was going to discuss the need for a general goal-setting session with the board, with the new board, that I think it would be an appropriate topic, but this might be a big topic that requires a workshop of its own.
I would think that, how many people think it would require a workshop of its own as opposed to a general goals workshop? How many people think it would be a workshop on its own? I, by show of hands, I, I would think it should.
On its own.
On its own.
On its own, yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, that's, Dave?
Definitely, and the sooner the better. We can schedule it next week, whoever wants to attend, and let's get this thing rolling. And if we need more people going up, or less, we can do that also.
Good with that, Dave? Van Bosh, you good with that? Joy?
Sure.
Okay. All right, well, that's, let the administrator take care of that. The next topic, Mr. Felix, assessing the present future viability of our landfill bioreactor. That's item F.
Chairman Samasko, I'd like to start by looking at the reasons the bioreactor was put in place in the first place. The thought was, make money for the county. I was told that was a minor reason, but there was also a thought that it was a better way to dispose of septic in the county, other than putting it on farmland. The illusion was that this was being dumped on farmland. The reality is it's being injected. There's very strict requirements for Eagle, where it has to be put underground, and indeed, it is a fertilizer and safe when used correctly. I also talked to Greg Miracle of Eagle, and he said there's never been a state requirement or any plans to discontinue the land implication of septic. So there's no regard to that. The argument that we need to have a bioreactor to take septic in, put it all down there in my district in Smith Creek, over a million gallons a year, that's null and void. Talking with Terry Zick, who's a principal at CTI at a December 10, 2024 meeting at the landfill, the county made a lot of money on grants and loan forgiveness because of the bioreactor over the years. She stated, as well as many other sources told me, there will be little future funding available in this state for bioreactors, as most of those types of funds are now being redirected to other renewables, such as we've seen with solar and wind energy. So that argument goes away, that we're going to get tons of grants and other funding. As we've seen, PFAS concentration in the landfill leach aid has become a problem, not because it wasn't there before, but because regulations have changed. And being that we are bringing in the septic and pouring it or putting it over the garbage, we're leaching a lot of the PFAS down into the garbage levels and also into the leach aid. That is now a problem. And in fact, there's quite a bit of money being expended by the county to treat the leach aid at the request of the Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant. I'm sure there will be additional chemicals that will be, become an issue as time moves forward. That's the nature of regulation. So putting this septic into a bioreactor in my district is certainly not a wise idea from that area. Again, there's potential to face lawsuits and state enforcement. The county is presently in an enforcement action with the state, which will result in penalties, fines, unknown amounts at this point, because of the escaping landfill gas. There's a class action lawsuit pending. This potential increases when you increase gas production. CTI and the bioreactor concept was originally estimated that the bioreactor would produce seven times more landfill gas than a normal dry cell landfill. So if the bioreactor continues, regardless of what technology we use to contain it, you're producing a huge volume of landfill gas over a normal landfill, you're increasing that chance that we'd again find ourselves in lawsuits, enforcement, and of course, odor to my district. That's unacceptable. Then there's the increased cost of engineering and oversight for the bioreactor component of the landfill. This year alone, the county paid CTI $2.1 million, 2024, for administrating the landfill. It's hard to tell exactly the way the bills are submitted, but being the bioreactor is a very intensive technology and a regulatory issue. I would say at least half of that is probably gone into bioreactor component. And then lastly, money we're making selling the electricity to DTE. We're at 520,000 in 2024, with a couple more payments coming, so somewhere over 600,000. Let's, let's round it up to 700,000. We're still behind the eight ball running that bioreactor in terms of the additional costs, the piping, the material, and the risk to the community. So I would say that I'd be willing for the next meeting, if we want to move it to the full board, to talk about whether we want to continue putting any additional monies and bioreactor components into the landfill. Now, recognize, we can't take away what's there. We've got untold tons of garbage there with septic in it that's going to continue to produce gas for five to seven years. That gas hopefully will be sold to DTE until that volume runs down. We have to contain that. But this is the legacy left to us by the previous chair of the board. We're going to have to deal with that. There'll probably have to be additional funds, and who knows what's going to be required to get that back under control. But to go forward with the bioreactor concept, I believe that that's a non-starter. I yield to the chair.
Anyone else have any comments on issues raised by Commissioner Felix relative to the bioreactor? Any comments, or David?
Got a couple things that we're going to have to address. How long before the DTE contract is up? Just approximate, if you know.
I believe it was a 20-year agreement. And I think we entered into it maybe around 2012.
Okay, so 2032 potentially? Okay.
I'll, I'll look the, up the exact date and email commissioners with that.
We, we do have Matt Williams here. I think he's still here. I've got to put my glasses on to see his distance. Hey, man. Part of the reason we were doing this is, every landfill within the state of Michigan, you see some have been turned into ski slopes, and at some point, they have to be closed. The bioreactor, when we do this, and Matt can address this probably better, but what we do, take a piece of pie, we got eight cells, and every cell we change every year, and that cell goes back into the ground. We have added, I'm going to say 50 to 60 years, maybe more, airspace. Every landfill, if we go to a dry landfill, that means that we're, our landfill's going to end much, much quicker, maybe a 20-year lifespan, I don't know. Matt can answer that. Is that something that we want to do? So that's the other side. We also have to, because if we end the landfill, now we're going to have to have either expand our current landfill and have it dry, and make it get to be a bigger mountain, or that our trash and garbage has to be hauled outside the county. So that's something we're going to have to look at too. So, and I appreciate everything you brought up, but there's some other concerns too. And you're, got our tipping fees, and we have some of the lowest tipping fees in the state. If our airspace, we don't take consideration the residents, and maybe we can cover everything. Maybe we can't. But Matt can probably give us a better update. You don't have to come up tonight, Matt, but next meeting, try to get Matt to have some of those questions answered, because if the airspace is only 20 more years, then the expense to the residents are going to exceed. Of course, I won't be sitting here anymore.
Anybody else, anyone else have any comments about this bioreactor as a, as a enterprise, I guess? I would say this, Bob, I was elected to this board in 2007, and 2005 is when this actually initiated as a conceptual initiative, and when I came on in '08, this contract started, building started. We had, Kerry's right, it was 2011 or 2012 when we entered into the contract with Edison. And from that point forward, you know, once we had it, I was on the board. I didn't know a lot about it. It really wasn't something I had much, you know, you're an engineer, you understood a lot of the stuff right out of the chute. But since the issue with the H2S out at the landfill, and as you know, I've dug in pretty deep on trying to figure out gas collection and remediation and issues and waste streams and all these things, PFAS and what have you. What I would say is, you know, I've, I've never really understood, and we've tried, I've tried, and I actually tried at your behest when you were just a regular citizen, to try and determine, ask some of your questions like, well, is this really making money? How is it making money? And, and the cost of the engineering, and how's it applied? And I actually came down and went through the file cabinet, looked at the invoices, and I, it really didn't help me a whole lot, you know. And our, our finance director, I've met with her and talked to Kerry about how it's been operated. So we, I don't think we really know whether it's a impediment or a good enterprise or not, but I know we have it. And I, I wouldn't want to do anything abrupt and just say, okay, stop putting anything towards the bioreactor until we figure out, again, now with our enforcement action, where's that going to go? You know, what are we going to do? I think the board needs to look at this in a long term, in a significant workshop, whatever, however you want to do it, experts, consultants, depend on Matt, whoever, to figure out what we have and what we're going to do with it, you know, in a, in a, in a deliberate way, in a thoughtful way. And I get what you're saying, and you, you live right out there, and you were really front lines with the community and what was happening out there. I've got my own assessment on, on some of what I feel occurred and why we had the gas release and so forth. We got on it, the motions I made a year and a half ago, we did what we could. We stopped the trash, we ambient air quality testing, water quality testing, you know, all these things, final cover. And then with all the money, the 1.8 million, I think it is, we put into that landfill since then, to show the good faith of the community, that we're really trying to restore the trust in, and make that operate correctly. And now that it's controlled as such, what do we do with it? So I don't think we're, I don't think, I don't know what to do with it. such, what do we do with it? So, I don't think, I don't know what to do with it, because I don't have enough information. So, you know, I would not recommend any kind of a motion or vote at this time on it, but certainly find some way and maybe, I'd like to hear some thoughts of the other commissioners. How do we look at this? How do you want to look at this? Because this isn't my problem or Bob's problem. This is our problem. So, how are we going to look at it? What are we going to do with it? Any thoughts?
Just to layer on to pending issues, you know, Bob, you brought up that the Port Huron, the city of Port Huron has limits that we need to adhere to. It's not the city, it's the state. And the issue with that is we don't know when that legislation is going to come through. So, it could be tomorrow, and suddenly we're out of compliance again, or it could be in 20 years. And so, we are hedging our bets. The city is hedging their bets, and they're trying to be a good partner with us. And so, I think, I think we do need to talk about what the future of the landfill looks like in St. Clair County.
How do we do that? How do you see us doing that? I mean, that's-
Put it on the workshop, not another one, because we've already added two tonight. Not trying to fill up anyone's schedule, but let's put it on there, and let's start the discussion, because it's not, like you said, we have it contained, hopefully, right now, and let's keep it contained, and let's be thoughtful of the process and do what's going to benefit the community.
Dave?
What was, what does the city of Port Huron charging us for the additional cleaning of this stuff?
So, we dispose into the infrastructure to Kimball Township. So, we actually pay Kimball Township our disposal fees. Now, the city of Port Huron is not charging us directly for the additional PFAS treatment. The county is going to put our own solution into place to pre-treat it before it goes to the city.
What kind of cost would that be?
That was on your December meeting, and that's going to be approximately, I believe that was about $1.8 million.
Is the Tetra Tech proposal?
That was the foam fractionization.
Okay. I know I'm going with this, and with the city of Port Huron and James Greed, and I think they got a real sweetheart deal on the convention center. They're our partner. Everyone in St. Clair County, we're partners, and we need to play nice together as best we can. City of Port Huron, I think, got a pretty sweetheart deal on the convention center. I voted no on it, but then after we got it, I'll vote the best interest of the convention center. You also voted no when you were on the board at that time. We also took over their central dispatch, because they used to have their own, and it is saving them in excess of $650,000. I think we should have some consideration for some of our cost, because now we're getting cost. Maybe not, but there's going to be additional cost to the county. City of Port Huron should play nice with this.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts?
Chairman Samasco, follow up on what Commissioner Rushing said. At a November 2023 Town Hall in Kimball Township, I believe Matt, if I'm quoting him correctly, we had 30 years worth of life with Canadian trash, 40 years without, and I see him nodding his head. Of course, Canadian trash was eliminated in December of 2023. I know that this board needs to catch up on the engineering part of it. I've studied that for quite some time, and I'm not proposing we do anything dramatic tonight. However, I feel it's foolish to continue to put pipes in the ground for new bioreactor activity if that's going to occur. I don't know when that slated to start, but injection pipes, there's a cost to do that. So, that's what I'm looking at. While we study this and get everybody up to speed, I don't want to see any new injection, septic injection pipes put into the bio-
Since there's a-
And I'm sorry, I have the floor. I have the floor, please. To address Commissioner Rushing's point further, the 10 years that we took Canadian garbage, the board turned their eye to filling up that landfill. So, I don't have a lot of sympathy for that. I think that once you put that garbage there and you build that bioreactor, it stays there for a long time, and that's not acceptable to me or my community. I yield to the chair.
The question I have, Bob, was since there was a moratorium on the bioreactor injection, I think we did that in December too, do you still see it as a, I mean, think it's an urgent, are we, I don't know, we're going to do what we're afraid we're going to do.
Yes, because we agreed not to put any more septic in, but I don't know at what point they're continuing to put injection pipes in the ground. There's a cost to do that, material and time. So, that is why I have this concern and why I bring this up at an organizational meeting. There's certain things where the county can save themselves some money while we're deciding. And to put pipes in the ground, now that may be easy. Mr. Williams may be able to say, no, we're not slated to put any new injection pipes in the ground for six months.
Do you think it'd be acceptable if we had our landfill director give us a report on your concern, maybe for next month, to see if it's an actual concern, and then-
Absolutely, Chairman. I don't think this is the type of thing you want to rush in. The odors are contained. I can tell you this, taking any action toward this will be viewed favorably by Eagle. I've been involved in many enforcement actions, and until they actually ask for the check, they look and see what you're doing to build your landfill further to present, prevent these kind of problems. So, there's another urgency there. But no, not certainly anything we have to deal with tonight or even the next.
Would you have any problem with formulating some questions for Matt and having him give us a report on your concerns next month, and then maybe we can go from there?
Yeah, I would agree to that.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Item G, Bob Phelitz, landfill engineering firm.
Are you tired of me yet?
No, Bob, I'm not tired of you. We love you, buddy.
Chairman Samasco, we all know where the landfill wound up last winter, and I agree. The board jumped on it, did everything they could to correct and contain. We just contained the issue. It was like turning a freighter on the lakes, and people that know me know that I use that euphemism. This type of physics issue, physical issue, doesn't resolve itself fast. It was clear to me with six landfill employees, including one engineer who is our esteemed landfill director, Matt Williams, it was clear to me that the direction came from CTI. And being a director in the corporate world for years, as soon as practically possible, I would have fired CTI for what they led us with this landfill issue. Now, that wasn't possible for political reasons. I have to adjust to the political world, so I ask your indulgence. But what I also ask is that at this time, and this is something we can do tonight, in fact, I will make the motion that our administrator put bids out for the engineering work that CTI does, and this ties into looking at eliminating that bioreactor component, because without the bioreactor component, which CTI holds a patent on with the county, we've never sold any of those patents. Without the bioreactor component, that engineering work becomes much simpler, less costly, and potentially, more people will bid. So, I will make that motion tonight that we have the administrator controller put that work out for bids.
Any other commissioner wish to make a comment on Bob's comments?
I think you bring up points that have to be addressed. I think we need to give Matt Williams a time to get some questions answered first before we go and put a bid out. Potentially, there's negotiations with CTI. I don't know. But I think we have a lot of questions that have to be answered first, and if we can do that next month, I don't want to damage what we already have there. And if we put bids out, you have a motion out there, and I could probably second it, because I disagree with some of my previous county commissioners. Just because I second a motion doesn't mean I agree with it, because I remember about four or five years ago, I had a Second Amendment. I couldn't get a second on it, and we weren't held accountable to throw. These people need to know where we stand on both. So, even things I don't agree with, I can give a second on it. So, if nobody else gives you a second, I will definitely give a second, but right now, we vote no.
Okay. Any other, we have a motion and a second. Any other comment or discussion relative to EDA as our engineering firm for the landfill? Any other discussion?
I'd like to say I agree with Commissioner Beeden, that we need to sort of put the brakes on and maybe go to a workshop and discuss these monumental issues before we start putting out bids on things. Also, I understand Commissioner Samasco is asking for some conflict of interest and ethics policies to be discussed and possibly put into place. I think those might be coming into play here. So, I'd just like to voice my opinion that I think Commissioner Beeden is correct, that we don't need to rush into putting out bids, and that we should approach these matters to educate ourselves before jumping into rash decisions.
Any other commissioners wish to make a comment?
I just have a question to Kerry. We're currently under contract with CTI?
That's correct.
And how, if we went to bid, how would that affect contracts?
We would have to review the language, but our contracts, our standard contracts have an out clause where we can have early termination. So, we would have to exercise that clause under the contract.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a couple comments. I've probably, in the last two years since I got on this board, probably spent 25% of my time and a lot of time on the issue of the landfill. And I've looked at the contract. I've gotten copies of the contract. I was here through all those years where we had the contract. But I never really worked closely with any of the engineers for landfill, because quite frankly, Jeff did that, you know, he was the landfill guy. And I guess I should apologize for that. But I've caught up. I've met their staff, Aaron Barish, Teri Zick, T. Young's an engineer out there, and I've met engineers from Tetra Tech and some other companies. And Bob and I have had this discussion back when he was just a citizen, you know, about horizontal extraction lines versus vertical extraction lines. And Bob's a big guy on vertical extraction lines. Horizontal extraction lines are horrible. They're a joke. Well, I don't know. I mean, you know, I'm not an engineer. But my point is, there's a couple of things that I think is caution. I would not support a motion to put it out for bid quite yet. I have no problem ever putting things out for bid periodically regardless of your satisfaction with your service provider. But we have an enforcement action that will be dependent greatly on our engineering staff to help us in our enforcement action with Eagle. I certainly don't want to give the wrong signal during the middle of a litigation, which may become litigation. It may become actual environmental litigation. It happens, you know. So, I think the timing, and it's not necessary that we just, I think the issue with EDA perhaps had more urgency. This, we need to get a real good handle on it. What are we going to do with our landfill? What are we going to bid for? We're going to bid for bioengineering? We're going to bid for no bioengineering? We're going to bid for, you know, what are we going to, how are we going to bid? Are we going to bid to partner with waste management? Are we going to bid to do something else? I mean, I don't have enough answers to. So, I support your concept. I think we need to look at things. I tried to look at things. You raised questions with me when you were just a lowly citizen, and I tried to follow up on it, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out. And I think that I still don't know why we can't have somebody look at that, whether some kind of an accounting degree. I asked Kerry about that. HUI, our accountant will know they're, they do other stuff. They don't do business-type stuff. Well, should we look at that to say, how has this worked? Is it working? Is it not working? Is our patent worth anything? You know, it's just, there's too many questions to just say, put that out for bid for a different engineer, and not to disrespect your engineering capabilities, because I'm quite actually impressed with your knowledge on a lot of the stuff. But I just, when I'm unsure, I don't, I don't take immediate action. So, I wouldn't support that as a motion to put that out for bid quite yet.
Dave, go ahead.
Just something humorous that was brought up earlier. He wasn't a lowly citizen before. He was the foundation of what we do. We are the lowly commissioner.
I'm just teasing him. Bob and I have got a pretty good, pretty good relationship.
They're more important than we are.
I agree, David. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Chairman Samasco. I appreciate the humor, and people are seeing me a little bit more direct tonight than perhaps in the past, but this is my district now. I'm responsible for that landfill as well as this board. I would ask Commissioner Angie, as well as others, if this isn't a time to dismiss a company for performance, and this is rhetorical, when would it be? What would a company, please, what would a company have to do to be worthy of being dismissed? Now, I agree, and I'm considering with enforcement and things coming, perhaps this is a little bit of bad timing. But I watch CTI. I was told they have 40 engineers have worked on this by the Vice President of Engineering of CTI. So, with all of that knowledge, and still to get us into the place where we were last winter, and realize there's issues with, you know, material that came in that probably shouldn't have been there. But regardless, rhetorically, what does a company have to do to be dismissed? As a Director of Engineering, they'd have been out. Now, we have to look at your point. Okay, this is maybe not a good time. So, maybe my motion is a little premature. I'll withdraw my motion, but not that idea that I want to leave in everybody's head. This is not an acceptable project in my district. That bioreactor project, that landscape around that landfill is way different than it was in 1967 when the landfill was put in. There are a lot of residents there. The odors went out over four miles. You couldn't go out and have a piece of coffee in your yard. If you had company coming over that night and the wind was coming from the wrong way, you had to run inside. That is not acceptable living, and as a county commissioner, I can't allow that to happen again. So, I'll withdraw this motion, but you can expect you will hear it again, and I yield to the chair.
That would require Mr. Rushing to consent to his second, to be withdrawing the motion.
I don't, Dave, I believe I gave him a second. I would have. I think I said I would second.
Well, in order, under Robert's rules, yeah. In order, under Robert's rules, you have to, and I would say, Bob, is that, you know, we think a lot alike. I was, I was right there with you when you tried to protect your community. It's not about not protecting the community. It's about just doing things in a way that we really get the information. I know where you come from. I'd like to hear from our administrator. I'd like to hear from our landfill director. I'd like to give CTI a chance to address whatever issues you specifics you have. I mean, I need to see, I'd like to see all that and then know what I'm doing is the right thing to do. So, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? There's no motion on the floor? All right. The item H or the items that I put out, I'm just going to just go over just very briefly. A couple of years ago when I was elected, I had actually drafted some things. Our conflict of interest in our bylaws is a sentence and a half. It's to me woefully inadequate. Code of Ethics, we don't even have. So, what I did is I basically grabbed some things from other communities. The Code of Ethics was out of Colorado. I doctored it up for us. The conflict of interest provisions were specifics out of the Michigan Board of Education. They had some pretty good teeth in it, you know, I thought, we'll throw that out there. So, those two items, I'm not asking for a action item, but as far as an interest, how many board members think, I would like to see those added as components to our bylaws, which we can amend at a later time. Is there any interest to do that as a discussion? Is there anyone, how many people here would be interested in doing that officially?
Dave, go ahead.
Definitely. Now, you're just talking about the first two?
Just the first two, those.
Yeah, I definitely want it to be part of the, our bylaws, because a policy isn't binding, or if that's the right terminology, legal terminology. The bylaws are what we are bound by commissioners, so I definitely want that. Conflict, ventrants, code of ethics. Now, in there, you also had the NDA, correct?
Well, I'll come to that in a minute. So, anybody, Bobby, had your hand up. What did you think?
Yes, Commissioner Samasco, as a private citizen, I watched for over a year as two of our commissioners, who are no longer with us, trampled that conflict of interest as well as a code of ethics. One did work with Fort Grasset while on this board, paid work. Another one belonged to the EDA while on this board, and apparently, they didn't see a problem with it, but I did. I think that's a conflict of interest. I think your proposal goes a long way toward addressing that, and I would support that. And the other proposal too, both the ethics and the interest, that's common sense to me. That's what would be expected for me as a commissioner.
Anyone else?
Do you want?
First, Dave, give anyone else, anyone else before we go back to Dave? I mean, Dave?
Do you want this potentially for action tonight, or you want to have it-
No, 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 no. I'm not, all I want to do is get some interest here, because what I did is I submitted actual verbiage, you know, these documents for people to look at. You know, I'm not saying I'm the brain trust on that. Good, bad, or indifferent. I'd like to have people's opinion. Maybe send it to full board for just a discussion item. Again, I'd like Gary Fletcher to look at the conflict of interest piece of it if we're going to do it. If there's, if there is, and we'll find out at that point maybe if there's a majority that will adopt it. So, at this point, there's only two other commissioners that have shown interest in it. Dave, go ahead.
We have, but they're not here, but one of them is, and maybe both, yeah, both township supervisors. And I know when I was township supervisor in Riley, we came up with these exact things, because we didn't have it. Once I got elected as township supervisor, and that was lacking, so we made it part of Riley Township, and I think their townships also have it, place these exact two things in other ones.
I'm going to move on to the statement of decorum and board duties and information. I decided to go to the new commissioner's school, even though I'd, last time I was to one in like 2008, but I went with Bob Phelitz, and Lisa was there, and they're actually, you can teach old dogs nutrition- And they're actually, you can teach old dogs nutrients a little bit. And they had a thing on, and I think for the community is, basically the board duties and information is a handout for people to have at the, when they come in because a lot of times citizens will come and they really don't even have an understanding of the basics of what we do. So you have a sheet that does that. And then the, so I drafted one, I've provided to you guys, which does not require board action. I could probably just put it out as board chair for people to read as just a document. And the issue with the idea of the statement of decorum, you know, the, we've gone through some pretty, pretty rigorous discussions and debate. Some of them became profane, some of them became personally vulgar and vile, and that's constitutionally protected. You can be the biggest vulgar, vile, whatever, you can do what you want, your three minutes, that's protected speech and you can do it. But the rules of decorum ask people to be civil and to try and, you know, conduct themselves in a way that doesn't offend women, children, and people with sensibilities. So that's the only reason I put that out there is I intend to put that out as board chair. If people get up and they go beyond what I think is violates those rules of decorum, I'll ask them kindly to conform. If they decide they want to continue in an aggressive, obnoxious fashion, they can do so, follow obscene, they can do all of it, you know. But I just felt that's my style because I don't like to see that, you know, too much of that. I know passion gets to the better of people sometimes and we will have tolerance, fully respecting people's rights to address this board as they can under the Constitution in any way they wish. But that's what that was all about. And then the last, the last piece of it, the one behind, the Economic Development Honesty Policy, I put that out already, Bob, you've talked about it, I think we've covered it enough. If this board has an interest in that, I think we're going to be looking at that as part of this whole EDA thing, you know. And I've talked to Dan Casey numerous times on that, I talked to Jim Fried about that, and we're having a vigorous debate about the propriety of banning NDAs for elected officials. But I'm, I've covered, I'm where I need to be on that. And just like a lot of these board members are, we'll have to work through it with these other entities. So enough said on that. The last piece that I put on there was looking at the way our board functions. We have four, four boards, there are four standing committees, which we, I read into the record here previously. And I wanted to add one for community economic development, just because as a fifth committee, my intention was to appoint Bob to this economic, community development, economic development committee, so that when we have board meetings, it's not buried in ways and means, it's not buried in public works, it's not buried over here. We know what we're talking about because that's more of this transparency. I don't think it hurts anything, I think it shows the public, we want to look at it, we want to focus on it, and we can kind of compartmentalize it. So if, I'm not going to make the motion myself, but if there's anyone here that thinks that, you know, this community economic development as a fifth standing committee is a good idea, I'd like to hear about it, I'd accept the motion, a second on that, we can discuss it, or I'll just let it drop. Dave, go ahead.
On all these items, the sooner the better. And whether we do it tonight, the last one we could do tonight potentially, but the other ones, I want them part of the bylaws as soon as possible. I read through them, there's some typographical errors, but the purpose is there, we can fix the capital letters and the spellings because.
Did the best I could, did the best I could, Dave.
I would like to see my thought pattern. If I was to make a motion for the, everything but the next committee, make a motion to have that for the next board for our bylaws, to add it to our bylaws.
Well, okay, so you, go ahead and make your motion. What is your motion?
On your first five items, you want those part of the bylaws? How many do you want part of the bylaws?
All I wanted was some discussion on it and it may be a full board, give some people time to think about it. I wasn't looking for final action on any of it.
Well, I want it part of the bylaws because that'll set by what we do as commissioners. And once we put a part of our bylaws, it's stronger than having just a policy. So I would support what you drafted, I've read through them all, and I support every bit of it. And I would have that go to the full board in two weeks. But the committee, I would make a motion, that would be a second motion to have the committee added tonight. That way it gives you as Chair, where you need to go as Chair.
Well, let me, let me handle it this way. I asked for the motion on this community economic development committee as a fifth standing committee. Dave's made the motion as their second.
I'm confused. Dave made the motion on what?
He made a motion on two things. He made, first, first he talked about the community economic development as a standing committee, a fifth standing committee, and then he got into this other stuff, I'm going to, I'll address that in a second, so I've separated them. So on the issue of just forming a committee for community economic development, to put those items in a standing committee for our regular standing committee meetings, that's, there's a motion. If there's a second for that, then we'll talk about it, if not, it will die for lack of second.
He didn't make a motion on that committee.
I thought, Dave, did you, you made?
Yes, I made the motion for that committee to be added.
Okay. Sorry about, well, there's a motion. Is there, is there a second?
I will second it. I think it's kind of poor that I'd have to second something I'm going to do, but I think there's a need for this in this community, and I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion on that? Anyone want to chime in on the wisdom or lack of wisdom to do such a thing?
Would, would this committee then lead that workshop? So we're still entering into like?
Yes, I mean, we could do that.
What's best for the community and what it really looks like, or is this person is just going to lead that discussion?
Well, my envision would be like any other committee, like whoever, whatever committee we have, that person is kind of the focal point at our committee setting. But if we have a workshop, you know.
Right, so I'm, I'm the Chair of the Human Services, so I go to the Board of Health Committee meetings, I go to the Council on Aging meeting, I go to the Council on Aging meetings, and I can report back on those things. What, what meetings are they attending to report back to get this information to us?
Well, economic development, EDA, some of the, we'd have to sort.
So they, they would be the appointee to the EDA Board?
Well, we, our EDA Board appointee right now is Carrie, because it used to be Jeff, and then on their own, they decided, because it used to be Groden, it used to be our administrator, they've gone through and they fixed that on their own without even, that's what they've done. So I'd have to go through and look at the, as a commissioner, we all go to whatever meetings we want. I go to landfill meetings, I as, I didn't have a committee, so I could, I just did whatever I wanted and I said whatever I wanted, you know that. So, but my vision is to, basically, at our meetings, the public can see that we've given this a place and we're going to focus on it, so people can look at it and talk about it at the meeting. If they don't go to any meetings or all the meetings, I don't.
I'm just trying to understand what, like, I don't disagree that someone should represent that and communicate it out. I think, you know, there is a lack of transparency there and I support that. I just don't, I guess, understand.
Lisa, my only conceptual idea there was that it would be, it's of sufficient importance that we compartmentalize it so people can see we're looking at it and just for that purpose of that meeting only, just the things that come before that board. Let's say, you know, of the 67 things we had on our committee in December, maybe six or eight of them would go over there and some go over here. You know, that's something the administrator would figure out what we're going to put where. But let's say there's going to be Corcat coming back, okay, that should be on that. Let's say the tax, this tax thing we're going to do tonight, okay, that goes over there. You know, this community economic development, so we shows, that was, that's, that's.
Would they go with planning also, like SEMCOG or metro planning?
Those things I think would fit. I mean, it's not, I think that's a good place for it, it's better than ways and means. I think it's a good spot and it kind of blends together and, so, okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Commissioner Samasco, I want to comment, and Commissioner Beeden, I sent your concern, and I don't want to give this board the wrong idea, that I do not want economic development. That's exactly wrong. I want economic development, but I want people, residents, to be able to participate. I want it to be open as much as possible. I want the commissioners on this board to understand what's being done in their district, and I want to have that driven to a sense where when I go to these township meetings, I hear people say, yeah, we, we want this. And I think it's more of a matter of approach, as I said, it's kicking the door down versus being invited in for a cup of coffee and discussion. Now, how we do that, if I chair that committee, if it's created, I would see at first, working a little bit with Dan Casey some more and trying to find out where there are some common areas. Maybe that would work, and I would report back to the board. And certainly, board members would be a part of that as much as they wanted to come. And then at that point forward, I'd also work at the other end with the townships. Where has this been lacking? Where are you getting development? Where do you need development? And where is it showing up where you don't want it? It's a big job, but it needs to be started, and I think putting it up here at this dais would bring it into focus. But I, I would tell people that think that everything's going to freeze because Bob Felix is going to chair that, that, that's not possible. You're never going to freeze change in the community. But I think we can do a better job of making it more transparent and getting some people that want change, the type of change that they want instead of what the business community wants. People are still going to make money, businessmen are still going to develop and improve things, and that'll be great. I want to see more direction from the residents and more input, and I think we can do that. And I think we can work together, and I would welcome your input, Commissioner Beeden, as well as the rest of this board. I know Port Huron has its own EDA, as does Marine City. I would talk to them and see where there could be some overlap, as well as metro planning in our own county. I've talked to them already. There's a lot of talent there, a lot of potential in that master plan that's not being utilized. So that's just kind of sketched out in my head, and I yield.
We have the motion second. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to form a fifth standing committee amendment to the bylaws to add a community and economic development committee. So I'm going to ask the clerk to, I guess, take a, take a roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Turello?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabach?
Yes.
Commissioner Angie?
Yes.
Chairperson Samasco?
Yes. Now, back to Dave's, he kind of backed up on us there a bit, there's a motion and a second for conflict of interest and code of ethics to go to the full board as a proposal for discussion and potential final action. Is that correct?
Correct. That includes that NDA part also?
Um.
I want that in there also.
For those, those three items to be forwarded to full board for further discussion and potential final action, that's the conflict of interest, code of ethics, and economic development honesty policy.
And have that added to our bylaws if the board chooses at that time.
We can do that at full board on a proper motion. So any, having stated the motion correctly, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, done. Now, the item nine, oh wait, I'm on the wrong side. Go back where I'm at. Item I, the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate, we took off the consent agenda for Mr. Rushing. Again, I will just merely state that my understanding from Corporation Counsel that this was a, their November 11th letter from the city was merely a notice to us, that under statute that they have to notify us that their DDA district is doing this, and we have an opportunity to come to their public hearing on a decision to be made by them, and it would be an information only matter. So we're not asking for any resolutions or any motions, just that it be accepted merely as an information only. Okay? Go ahead, Dave.
Maybe Carrie can answer this, or are we doing any of the, our successor here? But by us just accepting this as information only, they have no authority to not tax and by doing this, to give them a tax exemption. If we just take this as information only, we're not giving them permission to not get taxed.
The, the city or the local unit doesn't need the county's permission to grant a tax abatement? That's within their scope of authority. So whether this board agrees with it or not, if you don't approve this information tonight, it does not stop that tax abatement from going forward. This is simply a notice that gives the board an opportunity to attend a public hearing and express any concerns that they may have for them to take into consideration.
Well, I believe our library director is here, but $606 goes to the library, just for this one piece parcel. 249 go to our veterans. Do they get to not pay that? If that's, if that's the case, I can't support this. By doing this, I don't, we didn't get any legal papers. If we're giving them, is this giving them the permission to not get taxed by the county? And to say they can give them a tax abatement, it's the same thing that happened in Algonak. No, they cannot take away taxes from the county. They can give up their own taxes, but they can't give up county taxes. That's our authority.
So yes, the, the local unit is able to grant a tax abatement, so these industrial facilities tax abatements, those don't come to the county? This information or this item on your agenda is simply information only, it's providing you notice of the public hearing where the city will be discussing it and potentially voting on it. But there's, there's no action for this board to take.
Dave, I'm going to take the floor for a second. Dave, just, and what I did, Dave Rushing called me on this several days ago. I didn't have the foggiest idea what Act 198 of 1974 did. And I didn't know what industrial facilities tax exemption certificate meant, okay? So I looked at the statute, which is what the lawyers do. You look it up, and I read through it two or three times. It's, it's blindingly numbing to read through, but what it tells me, and I called Fletcher because, hey, I looked at this and quite frankly, it's blindingly numbing to me and I think I got it. They've given us notice of a public hearing on a development authority they've established pursuant to the statute. I said, why is it in front of us? The statute doesn't mention the county, it mentions cities, municipalities, townships, it leaves the county out. And Gary, quite frankly, honestly said, gee, I don't know either. But he found out. He had Alan Francis send me the memo to say, this is what this is, it's an information item. But the question, Dave, is I think you ought to go to that meeting. Because the question for the board is, do we want to send someone to that meeting to voice our concerns? I think you should go to that.
Well, we hit the Algonak issue here for the 24-year tax abatement. It was discussed that they don't need our permission for that. I asked Gary Fletcher while he was sitting there, and he said, most certainly, we get to control the county taxes. It's the same issue. They can do what they want with their own taxes. Gary Fletcher, and we can re-verify that with Gary Fletcher, they cannot dictate county taxes.
Well, enough, I think on that point, anybody else have any further discussion? Because all we're doing is accepting this as information only, we're not, we're just acknowledging they sent us a letter.
Commissioner Samasco, when I'm faced with things like this, what I say, it doesn't need to be on the agenda, we don't know what it's going to do, I say we take it off the agenda. And if they want it back for some reason, then we'll find out why.
On that point, Carrie, this was added basically for notification to the board?
Yes, it's, normally your committee meetings have a section on the agenda for information only, that's where this would normally be. Since this is an organizational meeting, it was.
If a single board member or several board members don't want the information, we can take it off and it's still information, we still have notice, we don't need to even talk about it. I'm okay with that. So, well, we won't talk about it. We're done with that. The next and final matter is the Administrator's report.
I, I would like to circle back to the board's request for a workshop to discuss the EDA funding, if we could actually set the date and time for that this evening, so we can do all the proper notifications. I know in the past, sometimes the board would do the workshop on the same day as their board meeting and do it earlier in the day, started at four prior to the commissioners' meeting. If you would like to do that, or if you would like to select a different day, certainly we want to make sure that staff are available. We would still want IT staff here, so it's recorded and livestreamed for those that are unable to attend.[1645.62] So, if you didn't want to do it before your 16th meeting, you could do it on perhaps January 23rd or January 9th.
And you're looking at me for some reason.
Well, you're the Chair.
Okay, well, folks, what's, what's your pleasure here? I mean, it's Bob, Carrie, uh...
I'm hoping on the 9th.
I think it's an urgent topic. Let's do it on the 9th.
Evening or day, I'm retired, so it's at your convenience, the working folks.
Does anyone have any particular objection to the 9th? Then it is the 9th.
I do have some prior engagements on the 9th, so I don't know what kind of timeframe. I guess that would matter, that would dictate for me.
What, what are you looking at for time-wise on that, Carrie? What's the...
You could do a 4:00 PM, a 5:00 PM, a 6:00 PM. I think, you know, certainly during the day works, however, it's difficult for public.
What would best fit your schedule? Joy for that.
No, if you want to do like 4:00.
Would that work for you?
Yeah.
4:00 is?
4:00 PM, okay.
David?
Do you want Dan Casey present at it?
Well, it will be posted as a public meeting, so we'll let him know.
I just want to make sure his day's also at that time.
Dan, is that something you might want to attend? Would that be available to... Okay, there you go.
Just consideration.
So, the second matter is, I believe that it would be good for the board to set a workshop, a goal-setting workshop. You know, there's been definite changes in the board, changes in vision, and having[1599.26]